Good evening, I'd like to open the March 14th, 2016 meeting of the Planning Commission. If everyone would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will run through tonight's agenda real quick on what's going to be on here. We'll have a public hearing for rezoning of Colonial Highlands, a public hearing for a planned development concept plan for Colonial Highlands, a public hearing on a conditional use permit for asset automotive, preliminary plat and final plat for Cavalry Baptist Church, final plat for Indigo Hills, PUD third plat, master alternative sign plan for Starbucks, other business and adjournment. So before I get started, I will run through a procedure for public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, call for exhibits from the city attorney, staff will make its presentation, I'll invite the applicant up to make their presentation, call for witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed, we'll have general questions and discussions among the commissioners, and then I'll close the public hearing and we will consider it for recommendation or approval or denial vote. So with that being said, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I would move for approval, or entertain a motion for approval, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I move that the minutes from the February 22nd Planning Commission be approved.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Duhon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item two, three on the agenda is the, I lost my sheet of paper, there they go, is a public hearing for rezoning, RZ-02-16-52-03, and the public hearing for the planned unit development concept plan, PDC-02-16-5204. I will open both of those public hearings, and the, I'll call for exhibits.
Thank you, the city has the following exhibits for RZ-02165203. Exhibit one, the staff report with attachments. Exhibit two, the affidavit of publication, the examiner on February 27th, 2016. Exhibit three, the application with attachments. Exhibit four, the 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five, names and addresses of property owners within the 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six, copy of the letter sent to the property owners. Exhibit seven, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And exhibit eight, the 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. The city has the following exhibits for the planned development concept plan, PDC-02165204. Exhibit one, the staff report with attachments. Exhibit two, the affidavit of publication, the examiner on February 27th, 2016. Exhibit three, application with attachments. Exhibit four, the 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six, a copy of the letter sent to the property owners. Exhibit seven, title for the land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And exhibit eight, the 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. Those are the city's exhibits for those two public hearings.
Thank you very much. And the applicant has requested a continuance to the March 28th meeting on both of those public hearings, so I would entertain a motion for continuance on both public hearings.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Commissioner Peel.
I move that RZ-02165203 and 5204 be continued to the next Planning Commission meeting.
You can do them both together?
Yes, both together.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Haney, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
Those public hearings will be continued to the March 28th meeting. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the planned unit development concept plan, PDC-02-16-52, oh, I'm sorry, sorry to that one. I'm getting all mixed up here. A public hearing for a conditional use permit for asset automotive, CUP-02-16-5207. I will open the public hearing and ask for the exhibits from our city attorney, thank you.
The city has nine exhibits for this public hearing. Exhibit one is the staff report with attachments. Exhibit two is the affidavit of publication, the examiner on February 27th, 2016. Exhibit three is the application with attachments. Exhibit four is the 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five, the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Exhibit seven, the letter from Richard Colson dated February 19th, 2016. Exhibit eight, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And exhibit nine, the 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. Those are the city's exhibits for this public hearing.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Jury is going to make the staff presentation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Before you, you have the conditional use permit for asset automotive, and we've already heard the rezoning for the same piece of property at 2450 Northwest South Outer Road, I believe, two Mondays ago, and that was approved by City Council last Monday. So they're moving forward with this, and this is the next step, the conditional use permit in order to get the use allowed on this property of what they're asking. So the property on South Outer Road is 1.99 acres, it's unplatted currently, it's regional commercial is the existing zoning, the, oh, it's undeveloped, and the comprehensive plan designation is court order reinvestment. Here's a map just of general location, and the conditional use, or the aerial of this site as well. So the applicant is actually asking for the use of outdoor sales and service equipment as well as vehicle repair limited to be allowed on this site. This includes the sale of used vehicles and the repair of, the general repair of vehicles under those two definitions. So through the conditional uses that are required for them to meet, they've acknowledged all of these requirements found in sections 405, 030, 050U, 050Y for vehicle equipment sales going on. For vehicle repair limited, they've also met all of the requirements under 030, 050W, and 405, 050Z as well. They've acknowledged all of these or provided information that leads staff to believe that they can meet all of these conditions. The general layout they have so far as a rough sketch, not set in stone currently, but in general, facing the top of the, the top of the paper here is actually facing north, South Outer Road, and they are looking at a two-story building along the east property line with vehicle display towards the north and west property lines with employee service area parking towards the south. With that, just as a general information, they believe, we believe that they can meet all requirements going forward with this, and staff recommends the approval of this conditional use permit with the four conditions. If there are any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Jury? Commissioner Billups?
Based on the drawing that you just showed us, will the building have to come before us for the site plan design review, or will it be something you'll be doing administrative?
No, since they have gone before the Planning Commission and City Council with other applications, they are required to go through the site plan design review through the Planning Commission.
So we will still see this even if it's a smaller building?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Peel?
The notification letters, were any of those returned from the?
No, sir.
No? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
We are here.
Okay, you'll have to be sworn in and state your name for the record, please.
Judge Wright, have you somebody's word, testimony, you're about to give this case to be the truth, so we got?
I do.
Need your name and address?
Name's Richard Colson, home address is 3000 West 83rd Terrace, Leewood, Kansas, 66206. And I'm here as a representative, as an owner of Asset Automotive LLC, and my partner, Tim Banner, is here as well.
Okay.
Nathan pretty well described it, but I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Any questions for Mr. Colson? All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? All right. I will bring it back up here for discussion, questions on the record. I will close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Peel?
I move that continual conditional use permit, sorry, cut 02165207 with the four conditions be approved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cradoff, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
And Chairman Graham?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a preliminary plat for the Cavalry Baptist Church, and Mr. Jury is back up on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Planning Commissioners. So before you, you have the Cavalry Baptist Church and the Blue Springs School District as well, jointly going before you requesting a preliminary plat approval and recommendation for the final plat. This is located on the corner of Northwest 22nd Street and Northwest Ashton Drive, it's approximately 6.88 acres, three lots are proposed on preliminary plat. There's two zonings across this site, service office, the first, and residential estate is the second, SO and RE. There is currently a church on site, and then there is also the school's office building on site as well. The comprehensive plan designation is neighborhoods. General location, if you can look at this map here, South Outer Roads running east to west, north of the site, and then there's north, there's Northwest 22nd Street and Ashton Drive as well, and the site portion is highlighted, and you can see only a small portion of the site is residential estate, and the majority of it is SO. All of the purple is actually, what I understand is under the church's ownership currently, and the residential estate portion, the green portion, is under the school's ownership, approximately. Those lines might be a little off. Here's an aerial of the site as well. So going forward with this, the applicants have asked to preliminary plat three lots and only final plat two of those lots. The northern portion, the vacant portion north of the church is going to remain unplatted until they find a buyer or someone wants to develop that portion of the property. The lot with the church on it will be platted, and then the third lot to the south, that is the combined vacant area to the west of the school office building and the school building, will be, will be combined into one lot and platted as such. There's two existing points of public access on the Cavalry Baptist Church, and there on Northwest 22nd Street, and then also one for the school district on Ashton Drive. There's an ingress egress easement, private one, running along the southern boundary of Lot One, and provides the access to Lot One and Lot Two for this drive. I'll go to the plat actually to help you visualize this a little more. So this is the final plat, this will help you visualize a little bit. Lot Two is where the church is, Lot One is where the school is, right in that southeast corner, and then also the vacant area will be included in Lot One that is owned by the church. The unplatted area, this square up here, is actually, will, is part of the preliminary plat but will be platted at a later date.
And just to clarify, we are hearing both the final plat and preliminary plat at the same time, but we'll be voting as separate issues, items after the presentation?
So the setbacks we believe can be met, the, any driveways, Public Works does not require any new driveways to be installed at this time, however, if any development warrants it, we, the, we will require future land use plans, or we will require a traffic impact study if the development requires it. Along the southern border, there's a crosswalk.
Oh, how do we turn the colors? Oh, my nerves.
Along this southern border, there's a crosswalk that will be needed to, that will need to be installed, connecting the southwest corner of the property in question to across the street, across the 22nd Street, to the area where the pool is. There currently is no crosswalk that will be required with a final plat. To the north, that unplatted area does not have access to sewer, so that will be one of the public improvements that will be required when they do final plat that third lot to the north. But since it is not being platted currently, it will not be required at this time. With that, the staff recommends that the preliminary plat is approved with six conditions, and the final plat is approved with four conditions. The six conditions for the preliminary plat, the, one is a pretty standard, just based, approval of Planning Commission based on the representations of any drawings presented as part of the application does not waive the requirement or development standard contained in the UDC. Two, the second condition, all public improvements must be constructed or financially guaranteed prior to approval, and that's, that'll cover the sewer that will be required with Lot Three, as well as the crosswalk. Third, the revised preliminary plat will be required to be install, or to be submitted I'll scroll to this, actually. So the, the preliminary plat is actually missing a couple callouts and measurements that are, that are called out in the legal description but just not provided in the drawing that accompanies the legal description. So the legal description is correct from, from our review, but the drawing itself just needs to have a couple of callouts added to it to provide clarity of the legal description for, for future review. Number four, the final plat, required crosswalk improvements. Five is talking about the sewer, as I mentioned before, and six is the traffic impact study, as I mentioned before as well. Well, for the final plat, there's the four conditions, first one's pretty standard and the second one as well, and the third one deals with the crosswalk, and then the fourth one is the traffic impact study as well. And there are the four conditions as recommended by staff. If there are any further questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Billups?
Mostly because I'm curious, is there a reason that this replanning or plating is coming before us at this point in time? Since this has been this way for, it's been on this site for a long time.
I might defer that question to the actual applicants who have been in the process of talking about the exchange of property.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jury?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Peel?
Mr. Jury, are you aware of any sidewalk installations by a site line design review or anything like that that may be accompanied?
No, they, they won't be required to have a site plan design review, is that the question?
Well, basically, are sidewalks going to be installed? Since there is a crosswalk going to be required, will there be sidewalks installed at some point?
There, I might prefer that one to actually be. I think I'm going to answer that after the school district presents their, I guess, maybe what they're anticipating with that lot, if that's fair.
Okay, thanks, man.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation on the final, or preliminary plat and final plat? This one right here.
If you need the maps, just load them.
Do you need to be sworn in?
No.
No, you might state your name for us, though.
Yeah, I'm Tom Clemmons with Area Surveyors, P.O. Box 324, Grandview, Missouri. This is property that was owned by the church, and the church and the school district talked, and the school district was interested in buying a portion of the south edge of the property, you know, that would be next to their existing property there. And so we divided it up into basically three lots on the preliminary. There's nothing planned or, not really intending anything right now for that very north lot, but it's just while we're doing it, we figured we'd go ahead and, you know, cover it in a preliminary for a possibility at a later date if they do decide to sell that. But it's just cutting off a very south portion of the church property, combining it with the school property, is really all we're doing. There is a crosswalk that they're talking about there, but it's evidently it doesn't, there's something else that still needs to be done with it, which the, somebody from the school board is meeting with somebody tomorrow, and supposed to be discussing what all needs to be done with the crosswalk. Yeah, I don't, he said something about a traffic study, I thought that we didn't need the traffic study, since we're not really improving, you know, increasing any traffic, we're, we're not even doing another entrance, that's the idea of the joint driveway easement along the south side of the church property, so we don't have to do another approach out onto the, onto 22nd Street. We're not increasing or, you know, making another approach or, like this, I, I thought that traffic study was...
And I'll comment on that. The traffic study is only required if the development requires it. With, with the plating of these lots, it opens it up to development, and we don't have control over what that is until it goes through the application processes, but if the development is large enough to require a traffic study, then we reserve the right to ask for one.
Right, but it's for any, it's not before the preliminary or final plat is approved?
Not at this time, though, yes.
Okay, well, that's, I just wasn't sure of that, but that's basically what it is, there's, he's here with the school board, I think, and...
Thanks, Tom. Dan Anderson, 1311 Southeast East Church Circle, Blue Springs, I'm with the school district. When we were approached by the church for the sale of the land, at this time, we have no plans to make that into a parking lot or anything like that, we just thought we could help the church out. We have confirmation from tandem paving, they will have the crosswalk and the ADA access points installed by the close of business Wednesday, so allow that to go to final plat for City Council approval on Monday. We do have an existing sidewalk that does run down, parallel to Ashton on that north side, as well as the south side of Ashton, so sidewalk's already there, we'll go ahead and get the crosswalk installed per city codes. Tandem's meeting with Mr. McCabe tomorrow, city engineer, to make sure we have all the specs right.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Clemmons or Mr. Anderson? Nope? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would entertain a motion on the preliminary plat. Commissioner Billups?
Let me look at my numbers here. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would move for approval of the preliminary plat, PP02165208, with the six staff recommendations.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I would entertain a motion for the final plat.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Billups?
I would also move for approval of the final plat, PF02165209, with the four staff recommendations.
I have a motion, do I have a second on that one?
Second.
From Commissioner Peel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That recommendation will be sent to the City Council for their, their vote at their next meeting. Next item on the agenda is a final plat for Indigo Hills, and Mr. Wright's going to make that presentation first.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you is the final plat for Indigo Hills, PUD third plat. This final plat covers approximately 9.26 acres and includes five lots generally south of Forty Highway, west of Southwest Elizabeth Street, and north and east of Fleming Park. This is the final single...
This is the final single-family estate phase of the development. The remaining tract, which is located in this area here, will be final platted later. That will be for 10 single-family Villa units. As-built drawings and maintenance bonds are required before the city engineer will sign off on the final plat for recording. Stormwater detention has been provided, stormwater detention has been provided in a drainage easement over a portion of Lot 38, kind of in the middle portion of the plat here. Required sidewalk sections shall be installed prior to final certificate of occupancy for each lot, which really only covers lots 34 and 35 down on the southwest form of the site. And then required landscape buffers on Lot 38 shall be installed prior to final certificate of occupancy for that lot. amended conditions, covenants, and restrictions have been provided to add lots 34, 35, and 36 to the existing HOA for the estates of Indigo Hills. And then lots 37 and 38 will be standalone lots. They will not be included with that HOA. And those amendments will be recorded with the final plat. Lots 30, sorry, all lots are classified as Class E, which requires minimum livable floor area of 1,800 square feet. That is consistent with the other platted lots to the south and the east. And then staff does recommend approval of the final plat with four conditions, including an amendment to condition number four, which I passed out. The only change on there is changing that the infrastructure improvements, the as-built drawings and maintenance bonds for those, instead of requiring those prior to approval of the final plat, it's being requested that those be provided prior to recording of the final plat, which will allow the final plat to be reviewed by the city council next Monday, to not hold that process up. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Billups.
Mr. Wright, I believe you just said that the sidewalk of the loop improvements were only on 34 and 35?
Correct.
There's no sidewalk requirement on 36? I would think there would have been.
There is not, since that is a cul-de-sac. If the cul-de-sac is a certain distance, they're only required on one side of the street.
Okay, because I'm looking at the aerial drawing and it kind of looks like, I guess that's just a lot line, it's not a sidewalk line, never mind.
Yeah, on Marguerite, they're just on one side of the street, the entire loop.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. Woods, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Woods? All right. I would entertain a motion on the final plat. Commissioner Peel.
I move that final plat, P.F. 02165202, including the four conditions be approved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, that will be sent to city council with our recommendation for approval. Next item on the agenda is the master alternative sign plan for Starbucks. And Mr. Jury is back up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. With this one, Starbucks along 704 Northwest 7th Highway is asking for the approval of a master alternative sign plan to provide variance from the sign code that allows them to have a wall sign along their northern facade, which does not face the right-of-way and is not on their main entrance, where wall signs are normally allowed. So that's the variation that they're asking for. This is approximately 0.93 acres. It's general business. There's the coffee shop, Starbucks, and phone repair share of the building that's onsite. And the majority of the, the majority of the signs, or all the signs meet the sign code except for this one sign on the northern facade, which is just right on this, right above the drive-through, is where they're looking for that sign to be. It meets all the size requirements if you allow the 10% rule that we normally allow for a wall sign to cover. It's less than 10% of the northern facade is what that sign covers. So it meets all those requirements. Here's a picture of what that sign looked like and where it is in relation to the drive-through as well. With that, staff recommends the approval of this alternative sign plan. With any questions?
Any questions? Is the applicant here, would he like to speak?
Jim Hogan, 4525 Northeast Fairway Homes Drive, Lee's Home in Missouri. I'm with the Curry Real Estate Services. We manage the property and lease the property for the owner, Wendy Wade, who lives in California. Starbucks had been at that location for 10 years. And part of our renegotiation lease with them is that they completely get at the interior of the Starbucks, refurbished it, and to meet their sign requirements that they're doing nationwide above the drive-through window, they're requesting this variance of the sign. And we hope that you will favorably approve this.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hogan? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of the alternative sign plan, A.S.B. -02-16-5201.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is other business, which our next meeting will be Monday, March 28. And regrettably, I will not be in attendance, nor will Commissioner Banks. So with that said, we need to elect a chairman pro tem for that meeting. Do I have any volunteers, any nominations? I see Commissioner Wallace pointing towards Commissioner Billups.
I nominate Commissioner Billups.
Well, since I have done it before, I have no problem with that.
I have a nomination. Do we need to motion and second that? Would you like to make that a motion?
I motion Commissioner Billups, chair, the March 28 meeting.
I have a motion, I believe Commissioner Peel seconded that.
That's correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Commissioner Billups, for filling in at the next meeting.
Glad to.
Any other business to be brought forward?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peel.
On the memorandum that we got on the, for the Indigo Hills final plat, I don't think we mentioned anything about the modification to condition number four. So is that necessary to bring that up or not?
I don't think so, because the staff changed that report during the public hearing. So I think it's okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
All right, thank you. Any other business? Commissioner Billups.
I would just put on one of my other hats for a minute here. Remind everyone that Friday evening is the Piccadilly Gala for Downtown Alive. And any ladies who have already bought a ticket, we'd be glad to have you there in attendance. Any gentlemen who have a wife who'd like to attend, we'd also like to have their presence. Starts at, I believe at 6:00 on Friday at the Conference Center.
And tickets can be purchased?
Tickets can be purchased at America's Community Bank. See Cindy Miller, she has them all now.
Okay, thank you. Any other business? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that the planning commission meeting be adjourned at this point.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Duhon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.